... Now, let's sit down in Guam and is called to order. I would like to ask Speaker Panglinen if you can lead us in prayer.
...... Inanitata la hinia dan Espiritu Santo. Zeus tota mangaiyang gwinina oni para binadzuda itautautonu ni maspipia ginin estina legislatura adzudu para inilalaniya. Maulik sa pa'gu na simona lokui semprita fana ginagopania idian mannoi gracia. Nasiguru na inkumprende na igracia ni minaulik todo gwinigitano gininhogu dan ilaimoas Jesús dan sinanonas Maria. Nasiguru na imbabaikorason momi dan ninagradesi imangaiyigwinipau'gu na para binzagi ininasyamnian momi para binadzuda ilanzeru. Sa todo esti gidian gracia todo ipofanmaplanta gi la masa para unoi dan ususteni itautautou momi i graciamu asusteni i Espiritun momi. Iminagofmu ni onoi esti xiae itautou ni ipofanlanzeru dan para umakspia dan umatonu misimiza dan udoku dan hami todo sempri umagradesi dan umaprobetsa iminaulik dan iminanngi. Nasiguru na aninahasu gwinadiya anmandanya ham dan ifamilian momi. Na lokui bindai donkulu gracia para esti itautou nilanzeru dan ipalawan ni omadzududa para dipalawan nilanzeru. Sa gininikanainia sia mos man aplasakana inia lo sia mos mangasgasikorasonia. Sa gininhogu niomfagnui iminaulikitanu dan iminaulik estina profesyon ipara unasiguru naguaha para itanu itautou ifamilia sia. Esti innanail ha'ou donkulu nagrosia imbindisi ham todo dan unoyam pas gwinigi mamamailak. Inanitata la hinia dan Espiritu Santo. Amen.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. May I ask Senator Mike Lim Piakupi can lead us in the recitation of the Inafrisik?
.....................
Thank you very much, Senator. And for the singing of the Guam hymn and the National Anthem, I'd like to ask Senator Morrison for the Panogitamoro and Senator Duennius with the singing of the National Anthem.
Panogitamoro, uri tanota, amtaknatu na nyari toru yiduka. Pa'ra iona, pa'ra idoya, aviva islasen para. Pa'ra iona, pa'ra idoya, aviva islasen para. Toru yidera bui pas, para ita, dan geni dan geni nabendishon. Kontra kiliku, na pasapuha, Zeus protei isla on. Kontra kiliku, na pasapuha, Zeus protei isla on. Oh, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Ooh, tu'ashtres and bright stars through the perilous fight. O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the monsters in the air, it grew through the night, that our flag was still there. O say of that star-spangled banner yet waving, o'er the land and the stream, and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Senators. I'd like to ask the clerk to please take roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennius. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator San Nicolás. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the Assistant Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to adopt today's legislative session agenda dated November 26, 2013.
A motion was made to adopt today's legislative session agenda dated November 26, 2013. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, so ordered. Senator?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated 29 October 29, 2013 through November 12, 2013, subject to corrections.
A motion was approved to approve the Legislative Journal, subject to corrections, for October the 29, 2013, through November 12, 2013. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Senator?
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended in today's Session Journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Senator?
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga Lahinguahan, and I move that these messages from Imaga Lahinguahan also be appended in today's Session Journal.
Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended in today's Session Journal.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there's no reports of select committees. Item 12, Introduction and First Reading of Bills and Resolutions. I move that Bills introduced number 216-32 LS through 220-32 LS and 221-32 COR through 227-32 COR be given its first reading.
On the motion that Bills introduced numbers 216-32 LS through 220-32 LS and 21-32 COR through 227-32 COR be given its first reading. Any objections? There being none, so ordered. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Resolutions introduced number 263-32 LS through 274-32 LS and 275-32 COR through 277-32 COR be given its first reading.
On that motion then to that resolutions that were introduced numbers 263-32 LS through 274-32 LS and 275-32 COR through 277-32 COR be given its first reading. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that certificates introduced number 74-32 COR through 81-32 COR be given its first reading.
On the motion that those certificates that were introduced numbers 24-32 COR through 74-32 COR through 81-32 COR be given its first readings. No objections, so ordered. Thank you. Senator, on motions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I move to excuse members not present for today's session.
A motion was made to excuse members who are not present. No objections, so ordered. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
A motion then was made that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session are considered first read and adopted and to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you. Senator, you are recognized again.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 209-32 COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. An act to amend Section 3 of Public Law 31-40 as amended by Public Law 31-234 relative to extending the deadline to obligate or expend American recovery and reinvestment funds and to place on the agenda and on the second reading.
On the motion then to place Bill number 209-32 on the second reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 223-32 COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Works, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. An act to appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the compensation to farmers for crop damages for the Crop Damages Program established pursuant to Chapter 64A Title V of the Guam Code Annulated be placed on the agenda and in the second reading.
On the motion then to place Bill 223-32 COR as amended on the second reading file and on the agenda, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the appointment of Mr. Andrew C. Park to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission for a term of five years from the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land with recommendation to do confirm on the agenda.
A motion to place the appointment of Mr. Andrew C. Park to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission without any objections, I mean to be placed on the voting file. Are there any objections? There being none, so ordered. Senator?
Madam Speaker, I move to place the appointment of Dr. Michael L. Bavacqua to serve as a literature member of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency for a term of four years from the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs with recommendation to do confirm on the agenda.
A motion then to place the appointment of Dr. Michael L. Bavacqua to serve as a literature member of the Council of the Human Arts and Humanity Agencies to do confirm and to be placed on the agenda. No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the appointment of Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as a member of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency for a term of four years from the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs with a recommendation to do confirm on the agenda.
A motion to place Dr. Judith Guthrie, I mean Judith Guthrie, Judith Flores on her appointment to serve as a member of the Council of the Arts and Humanities with a recommendation to do confirm and on the agenda. Are there any objections? So ordered. Thank you. I understand that there are others to be placed on the agenda, but we've yet to receive them for confirmation, so...
So we can come back to it later.
Yes, we'll come back to it later. Senator San Nicolás, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahinguahan, I'd like to make a motion to place vetoed Bill number 89-32 on the voting file and to be offered an opportunity to speak on the override attempt.
So on the motion then to place vetoed Bill 89-32, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahinguahan on the voting file, Speaker, I mean Senator, do you wish to speak on it? Okay, you may then proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in today's agenda, we have several very important matters that we will be attending to, and one of them is making sure that we're able to get money to our farmers. And that is an example of the kind of situations that come up that we need to be able to find money for in order to support the people who continue to make good things happen on our island. In May of 2013, we had a lot of money that was accumulating as receivables owed to this government. And in response to that, Bill 89-32 was introduced, and it was passed by this body on June 24th with an overwhelming majority of senators voting in favor of it. Unfortunately, Bill 89 was vetoed on July 5th. And what Bill 89 intended to do was to make sure that any receivables that are owed to the government of Guam in the form of taxes be set aside into a special fund so that we can make sure that the money is going to be there for things like this with respect to the farmers and also for other priorities that we need to be addressing in this government that are in critical needs of funding. We have so many situations right now that need money. We have the situation of our farmers. We have the situation of Simon Sanchez. We have the situation with our hospital. We have law enforcement back pay that's still due. We have merit bonuses that haven't been paid out. We have village roads that need to get fixed. We have school buses that need to get repaired. We have so many priorities in this government that we need to meet. And unfortunately, money is so hard to come by. But it's not because the money isn't there. It's because the money isn't being segmented out the right way for us to be able to track it and prioritize it. Bill 89-32, if signed into law, would have created the Responsible Receivables Fund so that any receivables that are older than one year would have gone into this fund and it would have accumulated for us to be able to appropriate for various priorities. And in Bill 89, we spelled out what those priorities are. One of them is court-ordered amounts owed by the government of Guam, of which we still have many. Another is prior fiscal year contractual obligations outstanding and payable so that we don't have vendors waiting 30, 60, or 90 days or even longer to get paid what they're owed by this government. Another priority that would have been spent from this fund would have been for prior fiscal year accrued and unpaid wages due to government of Guam employees. Another priority would have been for the merit bonuses accrued and unpaid, the procurement of medical supplies for the Guam Memorial Hospital, payment for education expenses to comply with the Adequate Education Act, capital improvement projects with an estimated useful life of five or more years for agencies dealing in education, health, public safety, or services for individuals with disabilities, and the procurement of durable goods with an estimated useful life of five years or more for agencies again dealing with education, health, public safety, or services for individuals with disabilities. Another priority that we listed here was for the advanced payment of any existing debt of the government of Guam as defined by bond covenants, municipal lease agreements, or financial institution loan provisions. If this bill had been signed into law, Madam Speaker, instead of vetoed on July 5th by the governor, we would have been setting aside money for these priorities. And how much are we actually looking at here? At the time the bill was introduced and passed by this body, just one month had elapsed from the time that I had a report here from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And in this report that I had from them, there was $39 million in receivables owed to this government that were older than one year. If we had passed this bill, any collection of that $39 million would have gone into this special fund. And today, we wouldn't be having Simon Sanchez left hanging, wondering whether they're going to get their roof fixed or not. We wouldn't be having buses that need to get repaired. Law enforcement pay adjustments probably would have been able to get caught up a lot faster. Court-ordered settlements could have been paid out. So many priorities could have been met, priorities that we committed to if this bill was just signed into law. Unfortunately, it wasn't. That money was never set aside, and it got lost. It got lost in the whole big black hole that is collections, receivables, cash, appropriations, all the complex things that go into budgeting and making sure that this government is able to operate. If we are not separating out old money from new money, we're going to constantly keep mixing it together, and we're not going to know what's getting spent based on what we budgeted for for the coming 12 months or based on what was coming in from previous years. And just as we make sure that we separate prior year obligations from current obligations when it comes to what we pay for, we need to make sure that we're separating prior year money from current year money when it comes to what we're bringing in. Because if we don't separate the two, Madam Speaker, and we keep mixing up the money that's coming in, we're not going to be making sure that we're collecting what we're supposed to be collecting. And our collections have been a serious problem in this government. I have here an updated report from the Department of Revenue and Taxation that shows the last fiscal year from October to October, 2012 to 2013. And in this report, there are some alarming figures. We had 284 businesses in June that were allowed to renew their business licenses even though they did not pay their taxes. For every single law-abiding, tax-paying citizen on this island to be held accountable for what they pay and owe to the government, but for these 284 businesses to be allowed to get away with it means that we're creating an environment that is unfair for every honest, hard-working taxpayer on this island. Over the last fiscal year, Madam Speaker, our government has abated millions and millions and millions of dollars in taxes that are owed, the people's money. The government said, "Write it off." And exactly how much was abated, how much was written off in the last fiscal year, Madam Speaker? In withholding taxes, corporate income taxes, and business privilege taxes alone, we gave away $20 million. We wrote it off, and we said, "Never mind, you don't have to pay that." These are all just business taxes, Madam Speaker. And when you get into the numbers a little bit deeper, it gets even more alarming. Withholding taxes, of which we waived away $4 million, $4.8 million in the last year, withholding taxes are withheld from employee paychecks. So if you were owed $100 in a paycheck and the government, I'm sorry, your employer held $20 to be able to pay you your refund at the end of the year, they withheld it, that's the withholding tax, they took that money from you as an employee. So for us to say, "We can go ahead and waive away that $4.8 million," is to say, "You just took from your employee." Where did that money go? And withholding taxes, Madam Speaker, are the critical taxes that go to paying tax refunds. Business privilege taxes, Madam Speaker, in the last fiscal year, the government waived away $9 million. And when you dig deeper into that number, that is also very problematic because business privilege taxes are gross receipts taxes based on a transaction. So if I sell you something for $100, I have to pay $4 in gross receipts taxes. A transaction was made, the money was there, you paid for the product or the service. So where did that $4 go? It's not $4 that was owed that somebody had to come up with, it's $4 that was collected by an enterprise that did a transaction, whether they sold a product or provided a service. Where did that $4 go? Those types of transactions added up to $9 million in the last fiscal year, and the government waived it away. We have all these needs in our government, all these services that need to be provided. We have all these priorities that we all agree need to be addressed, and we all understand that the money needs to be there in order for us to fix them. But why are we waiving away money that is already supposed to be in the bank? $20 million in withholding taxes, corporate income taxes, and business privilege taxes was waived away in the last fiscal year. If we override this veto, we will create a special fund so that those types of taxes that are older than one year will go into that fund, and we can account for it, and we can say, "There is the money." And one of the reasons why there was an objection by the governor to sign this bill is because he uses that money in order to keep the government operating. But when you really get into the meat of that number, when you dig deeper behind what that means, that means that he's using old money so that the 284 businesses that we're supposed to pay taxes can get away with it this year so that the older tax collections that we bring in are going to cover that. If we create this special fund so that this old money gets put into this special account, it will require our government to go out and collect the taxes that these 284 businesses owe. And that is fair. Every single hard-working taxpayer, whether you're an individual or a business, had to cough it up. So why were these allowed to get away with it? And allowing them to get away with it means we have to cover that shortfall somewhere. And where do we get it from? We get it from the older receivables. We get it from all of these $20 million that we're waiving away. We get it from these tax collections that we're supposed to be bringing in. And that, Madam Speaker, is not sound financial management. That is not the right way to run a projection-based budget. It has nothing to do with our job here as lawmakers to appropriate. It has everything to do with the administration's responsibility to account for every single dollar of the people's money. So it's important, Madam Speaker, that we as lawmakers create the mechanisms to account for that. We need to create an environment where if you owe taxes this year, you will pay your taxes this year. And we're not going to let you get away with it and cover it up with old money so that we can help out whoever we want to help out and cover it up from the back end. That's not the right way to do it. That is not fair. And there's an even greater danger too, Madam Speaker, when you create these environments of unfairness. Because these environments of unfairness scare away businesses from investing on this island. If I'm going to come in here and open a business, but I know that my competitor doesn't have to pay his taxes, he has an unfair advantage, a tremendous one. It's like qualifying certificates in reverse. It's like qualifying certificates in reverse. Instead of him getting a QC to abate his taxes, he just doesn't have to pay it, but I still have to compete with him. So we scare off investment, we prevent new businesses from opening. Fairness is what every single investor looks for, is what every single new business looks for when it's going to be putting out its hard-earned money to create opportunities here on Guam. So if we can create a more fair environment by simply separating out old money from new money, we will encourage growth and development here on this island. So it's a win-win across the board. It's a win for the growing of our economy, and it's a win for accounting for the people's monies that we can focus on priorities. As of right now, those two-hundred-and-eighty-four businesses that did not pay their taxes, along with others, I'm sure, accounted for thirty-eight million dollars in outstanding business privilege taxes that have not been paid yet. Twenty-five million dollars in corporate income taxes that have not been paid yet. Seventeen million dollars in withholding taxes that have not been paid yet. And when we don't collect those, we make up for it by taking from everywhere else. And in the end, who suffers? In the end, our students up at Simon Sanchez need to hold rallies and mobilize just to get their school fixed. In the end, we have law enforcement, police officers who have to wait years and years and years and years just to get the pay adjustments that we committed to. In the end, we got to scramble at the end of a fiscal year to save the hospital because it's short. Village roads go unfixed. Kids have to get second trips or third trips to get picked up and taken home from school because we don't have the buses to do it. School schedules have to get adjusted so that kids are waking up at five in the morning to go catch their bus. And also that two-hundred-and-eighty-four businesses can get away of not having to pay their taxes this year. But we don't want to separate out the old money from the new money because that's what we're using to cover this very, very rickety type of financial management situation that we have. So, Madam Speaker, as policymakers, it's our responsibility. It's our responsibility to make sure that we're creating the environment for fairness to flourish, and that we're doing it in a way that's going to be a win-win for growth and development in our economy by creating an environment of fairness, and also for our commitments that we have made, and for all of the priorities that we have to our kids, to our public employees, and to our community that relies on their services. So I humbly ask all of my colleagues to please help me in establishing this environment of fairness by overriding Bill eighty-nine and making it public law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I voted in favor of the bill when it was originally before this body. And I wasn't going to rise today to speak until I heard the statistics the retiring Speaker exposed to all of us. And it was, it is shocking. I thought I, as you know, over the last several months, I have been chasing around the professionals that get their business licenses renewed without having to clear taxes, the attorneys, the accountants, the doctors. That, that two-hundred-and-eighty-four may be a fraction of what, of the number of people that aren't paying their taxes. But the one thing that the retiring Speaker did not expound on completely was the amount of money that, of withholding taxes that hadn't been paid. He very correctly said the withholding taxes are supposed to pay for tax refunds. We have been current with the payment of tax refunds, Madam Speaker, or at least during this, during this last year we have, and we just borrowed two-hundred-and-thirty-million dollars, or some huge amount of money, to pay all for the back, uh, taxes that were, tax refunds that were owed. But the thing that concerned me after the retiring Speaker spoke about the fact that there were seventeen million, I think it was, of withholding that hadn't been paid, we've had to pay the tax refunds to each one of those employees whose employer did not contribute to Department of Revenue and Taxation so we could pay for it. And as you know, earlier we were discussing the fact that I was, I woke up the other morning wondering about that because I just thought that knowing that one of the government agencies hadn't owed the government about four-and-a-half million dollars, or six million in withholding, we know that we paid their employees their tax refunds, but with what? The withholding that was kept out of their paychecks never made it to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, never made it to the Treasurer of Guam, yet we paid their tax refunds. For some of these two-hundred-and-eighty-four companies, Madam Speaker, not only did we pay their tax refunds, but it's obvious from the amount of their inability to pay their taxes is that they're probably not paying their employees that much. And when they're not paying their employees that much, we can almost bet that they're getting earned income tax credits. And that's another amount that's completely unfunded by the federal government. I was shocked when we were talking to Revenue and Taxation and discovered that of the hundred-and-twenty million dollars that we're paying in tax refunds, almost forty-eight million of that It's no wonder we can't address the issues of Simon Sanchez, or the ninety million dollars in repairs that are necessary, or all the other things that the retiring Speaker so eloquently spoke about. Madam Speaker, it's imperative. I mean, when I discovered that the Revenue and Taxation was unable to follow forty hotels, I thank you all in this legislature for allowing me to include in the last budget that that two-and-a-half million dollars in back hotel occupancy tax that hadn't been collected would be saved for FESTPAC. But if they can't follow the forty, I'm wondering how, if they're able to follow sixty thousand So we really need to have somewhere where we can put these monies that we weren't, that weren't being projected for the upcoming fiscal year, but should have been collected in a prior fiscal year, put into this special account, so that this special account can start to take care of all of the mandates from previous years that we didn't address, the ninety million for the schools, the buses, whatever else that has been spoken about. So I, I too join the retiring Speaker and sponsor this legislation to please ask my, our colleagues to please vote for this override. It is high time that we go out and make our best efforts to collect everything, because none of us want to talk about tax increases. And I don't think that we should until we collect everything that is due to us. I am a firm believer that if we collect everything that is due to us, we won't need to consider any increases at all. But if we don't collect everything that is due to us and allow two-hundred-and-eighty-plus, whatever professionals are out there that haven't paid their taxes, plus some other people not paying their withholding, of course that's going to drain the general fund and make it impossible to address the very important issues in our government. So I joined the sponsor and retiring Speaker and asked for a positive vote in support of the override. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator, you want to send it down to the voting file? So, okay, so notwithstanding then the objections of Imaga Languahan on vetoed Bill eighty-nine dash thirty-two, to be sent then to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. We're still in motions. I'd like to recognize our assistant majority, Senator Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And before I place more appointments, I would like to just acknowledge the presence of former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson. And we'll ask that he join us in fact. Madam Speaker, I move to place the appointment of Mr. James A. Mason to serve as a general public member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council for a term of three years from the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs with the recommendation to do confirm on the agenda.
A motion then to place the appointment of Mr. James A. Mason to serve as a general public member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools, to do confirm, to be placed on the agenda without any objections, so ordered. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place the appointment of Dr. Suzanne B. McManus to serve as a general public member, general public member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council for a term of three years from the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs with the recommendation to do confirm on the agenda.
On the motion and to place the appointment of Dr. Suzanne B. McManus to serve as a member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council with the recommendation to do confirm on the agenda, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place on the agenda the appointment of Christopher K. Felix to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents for a term of six years from the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs with the recommendation to do confirm.
A motion when it was made to place the appointment of Christopher Felix to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents with the recommendation to do confirm on the agenda without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place the following appointments to the voting file.
On the motion then to send the appointees down to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. That's it. Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator.
The first bill on today's agenda is Bill two-oh-nine. I recognize the Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill two-oh-nine, as amended, on the third reading file, and I would like to just briefly explain it.
Any objections? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is a very simple bill. It is a bill that has been addressed already in Public Law thirty-one dash forty. What it deals with is the monies for Phase One and Phase Two of the ARRA Federal Grant Application that the Department of Education received of approximately sixty million dollars of federal funds, which is originally allocated for capital improvement projects, technology upgrades in science, technology, engineering, and math, known as STEM, for other CIPs and equipments, and of course, the monies that were originally in place in a trust fund. The expiration date will be by this year, and what the department is asking by September, rather, is past September thirtieth, twenty thirteen, they have requested that if we could put bylaw an extension of January thirty-first, twenty fourteen. The request already was made to USDOE, they have agreed to do this, and they've relayed that the concerns that there has been many protests that have taken place, and that, but however, and they agreed then that if we could obligate these funds by that time, then we would not have to repay the balance of those monies. We're looking at approximately five-hundred thousand dollars is the remainder of what we would need to then encumber for all of the projects in its original application. There is, however, a request that the monies were sitting in the trust fund, that it has accumulated some interest to the tune of about seventy-nine thousand dollars, and they've asked if we could have those monies, of course, appropriated back to the department for them to use for a number of ongoing projects. And, and of course, what those are are for other projects, again, that as we move along, some of these projects have actually been modified, and then the delay has caused some increase in the projects. But more importantly, I think that if we're able to, and I've had a conversation with the, you know, some of our members here, that because of the impending situation at Simon Sanchez, is that every little amount of money that we're able to get our hands on, I would like to amend, of course, just one section to include Simon Sanchez in this. And of course, it would mean that it should be following the same language that's in the original application, and maybe on page two, if I may, on line nineteen, that right after Antalan Middle School, if I can just put in Ann Simon Sanchez High School.
Any objections? Hearing none.
So with that, I ask my colleagues that we don't want to have to send back any money to the federal government, we would like for it to stay here and to be used for our CIP projects. So please, I ask that everyone give favorable consideration and voting for Bill two-oh-nine. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And the motion then to send to the third reading file.
Is there going to be an amendment to, for the seventy-nine thousand?
No, it's there, language was put in already.
Okay.
If you look, it is saying seventy-nine thousand, but there is language on page three, D, number four, that all interest and investment earnings from the trust account is hereby appropriated to the Department of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other senator who should be heard on the bill? Senator Pangolino, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, very quickly, I just want to rise in support of the legislation, of course. As you know, when we originally got the ARRA grants, there was a concern that because of the time deadlines for the obligation and expenditure of the funds pursuant to the original ARRA legislation, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that Guam was in danger of losing close to sixty million dollars because of their inability to obligate these funds through our procurement process. And so in response to that, what we did in the legislature was, I had introduced the bill that would have allowed us to substitute out these funds for personnel services, so that we had already expended almost sixty million dollars in personnel services, and it allowed us to now say that those are the ARRA funds that we spent. But the money that we had, that we had applied for, for capital infrastructure projects, then remained to be available. And so what we did was we swapped out those funds, therefore ensuring that the time deadlines did not apply except through our MOU with the U.S. Department of Education. So it allowed us to salvage those sixty million dollars. But much more importantly, it allowed us to ensure that when we swapped out the funds for operational funds versus capital funds, that the conditions of then the remaining sixty million dollars remain intact from our original application and are dedicated to the improvement of the capital facilities of the Guam Department of Education. Well, lo and behold, as we move forward, we continue to run into some problems, and we have gotten another extension, and this will be our third extension. There's probably three million dollars left in unobligated ARRA funds, and this would allow us to salvage those funds, plus, of course, the expenditure of the interest and from those trust fund, investment earnings and interest from the trust accounts that are now able to also be expended, and again, go into the capital improvement needs, capital infrastructure needs of the Department of Education. So this should probably be the last time that we would have to deal with this issue, and we would hopefully ensure that we spend this money for what it originally was intended for, which is to improve our facilities for our children so they have a better, safe learning environment. So certainly, I thank the author for continuing to follow up on this issue as we continue to work on this, and ensure that in at least this area, we have averted the need to return any federal money unspent, and instead have put it to good use in the improvement of our educational facilities. our educational facilities. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senator who should be heard on Bill 209? If not, Madam Speaker, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I thank, of course, Speaker Pangolino for giving the, the history of this and how we were able to protect those monies so they won't go back, because the timelines were really very tight. I'd just like to make one last amendment, and I would like to include Speaker Ben Pangolino as a sponsor, Senator Munia Barnes, and Senator Lina Masita. Thank you very much.
Hearing no objection. Thank you very much. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 223. I recognize Senator Ben Pangolino, the author.
Thank you, Ansidus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it.
You may proceed, Senator.
I mean, I'm sorry, be moved to, to the...
To the, yes, to the third reading, and you would like to speak, yes.
Thank you very much, Ansidus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it.
You may proceed, Senator.
I mean, I'm sorry, be moved to, to the...
To the, yes, to the third reading, and you would like to speak, yes.
Thank you very much, Ansidus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 223-32COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Parks, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, be placed in the second reading file, and I'd like to speak to it. Madam Speaker, this week is Thanksgiving, and on the day of Thanksgiving, from the bounty of the fields and the richness of the sea, we place before our families the food to eat. But for many in our community, and those that make their living off the land and the sea, there is no bounty, there is no harvest, because of what has occurred over the last couple of months, when Mother Nature wiped them out. When they're, all their plans, all their hard work, all their resources that have been placed and planted in the fields are no longer there because of the severe weather conditions that was suffered, that we all suffered. And when we suffer severe weather conditions, you and I, we may get wet, we may get cold, but when the farmer suffers adverse risk conditions, it wipes out his source of income, it wipes out his living, it wipes out his abilities and resources necessary to recover. And that's why, Madam Speaker, when I was a member of earlier legislatures, we worked on, Senator Vice Speaker Nelson and I, worked on establishing a compensation program to give grants to farmers to help them recover, so that they can get back to planting, they can get back to working the fields, and they can get back to harvesting when it's ripe and ready for the market. For us, not for themselves. They don't eat, all they consume, I mean, all they grow, they provide it to us, the community. And Madam Speaker, it's been two months since the farmers suffered these, and it's been two months, I admit, Madam Speaker, that I wasn't aware of the severe conditions that the farmers suffered. I was gone for a little bit during some time, but I wasn't aware, and the farmers were offered, were offered assistance, and by the time, all the details of what they were being offered, they were being offered a loan. Now, when the times are good and the farm's doing well, yes, maybe they can afford a loan. There's always money for a loan, but when the time that they suffer the economic damage that wipes out their resources and limits their ability to recover, the loan is not the answer, and that's why we established the Farmers Compensation Grant Program, to help them recover. It's, it's, it's not a giveaway, it's not a handout, it's a commitment that this government made in establishing a program that's in place for just this kind of situation. And we have waited too long for them to even fully recover, even if we gave them all this money, because some of them are facing already the hardships of not having a harvest for the last two, we could be eating corn, fresh Guam grown corn this Thanksgiving, had we acted quickly back then. But we've been saying, no money here, no money there, now we got money everywhere, I understand. We even got more money than what is here. If there's more money than what is here, let's give it to them, let's give them more, because we've damaged them even more by waiting so long. So Madam Speaker, this $400,000 will fund a program that already exists, it comes from the earnings of the charges, the GIDA charges, the government of Guam for going to New York, having dinner, and selling bonds. And those fees that they earn would be, rather than staying with GIDA, would be redirected to the Farmers Compensation Program at the Department of Agriculture. It would be appropriated to their, it's no longer GIDA money, it's GovGuam money, and there's extra money there. I asked GIDA, when they're saying, we don't, we already have plans for that money, I said, you already have plans for that money? When did you make plans for that money? Oh, a couple of months ago. Then when did the legislature pass the bill to allow you, GWA, to sell the bonds and you to earn your fee? Last week? Oh, so you made plans two months ago to spend money that just got approved last week? What happens if that law were to have not passed? Oh, we would have made adjustments. Well, GIDA, make those adjustments, because you say you can, you say you will, make those adjustments, because this money is more critical to the survival of the farmers at this time than to the survival of GIDA. GIDA's gonna survive, don't worry. If you're worried that you're gonna, GIDA's gonna go under because we're taking their fees, no, the farmers are going under now, and there's cold, hard cash from those GIDA bond fees, and let's direct them to the farmers. Let's not give them a loan, let's give them a grant according to the program that has been established and implemented in the past and has worked, when we weren't trying to decide who's gonna do what. When there was a disaster, there was a declaration, money was made available, the farmers, DOA did, agriculture did their assessment in three days, the farmers put in their receipts, and the money was disbursed. I must add, this time around, we waited for, we just declared an agricultural natural disaster last week from rains two months ago. Why do we do this to our own people? I don't understand it. And so, when we identified that money, we acted as quickly as we could, and we are here today to truly have a Thanksgiving for everyone, including the farmers. And once again, if there's any question at all whether or not we can do this, GIDA's saying, no, don't do this. GIDA has, I think, $3.7 million in unrestricted reserve assets, something like that. And when we said, and you know what the excuse was? We don't want to give any of our reserves, because we want to preserve our reserve. You want to preserve your reserve? Why shouldn't you be giving out your reserve? To stimulate economic growth? Well, this is the best way to do it. Use the revenue earnings of GIDA that the government of Guam pays, those are GovGuam dollars, those fees are not some income from private sector. Those fees are the government of Guam fees paid to GIDA. They're our own money, and for GIDA to say, don't take our money, hey! No, that came from charging the government of Guam, GWA, to be a facilitator for the issuance of those bonds. You're not from Warren Buffett or American Express, they're from the government of Guam, GWA. So let's take that government revenue, put it into a government program that would help our local people, and GIDA will not be any worse off, because they don't have those fees. They said and assured us that they will adjust, and they will work with it. And if we have any more money from any other resources, then I say, add it to this. Don't say, take this away and put that other one there, and where does that go? Just add it, just add it, and when we're all done and we all paid the farmers off, then we'll decide if there's leftover, what else we can do with it. But let's not play any more games, let's not do anything else, let's just move forward today. We have a bill before us, it will help the farmers, and if you have any more money, put it on this, or if you don't want to do it, give it to Simon Sanchez, give it to GW. But don't, don't, don't let the farmers have to figure out whether or not they're gonna get their money or not, or whether or not there's a restrictions on this, that if it comes from GIDA, the farmers might not be able to get it for whatever reason. This is an appropriation of revenue that goes directly to the Department of Agriculture for the purpose of implementing the Farmers Crop Compensation Program. And I plead with you on this Thanksgiving week, let the gov, let this government give a reason for our people to be thankful, because we just said, no more waiting. We understand the hardship you face and the losses that you suffered, and we will do what we need to do to give you help. So I ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, for their kind consideration and their support on this legislation. Before I give an opportunity, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make a couple of amendments on the bill. Number one is Senator Rispio, as asked, and, and we're gonna make a motion to add Senator Rispio as the second co-sponsor, or the first co-sponsor in the bill.
On that amendment, no, so ordered.
And then Senator Munia Barnes to be the third.
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
On line four, Madam Speaker, the bill, where it reads, "Bond service revenue fees", I would just like to strike the word "revenue" out, it would be just the bond service fees.
Got it. Renee? On the amendment, no objections, and so ordered.
And on line six, Madam Speaker, I would just like to strike out the words after "assets", the word "assets", unrestricted net assets or fund balance, to just strike out the word "or fund balance" and replace it with the word "or its equivalent", so it's the unrestricted net assets or its equivalent.
Got it. Okay. On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
And on page two, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, we, we just kind of repeated in legislation what is already in the rules and regulations of the Crop Compensation Program, so where it, on line two, where it reads "bonafide farmers", I would like just to strike the word "bonafide" out, and would do the same on line 12, 13, and 14. So it just reads, "rules and farmers that apply and qualify for", because the word "bonafide farmer" is already in the rules and regulations.
So on the amendment, page two, then, on lines two, 14...
12, 13, and 14.
12, 13, and 14, you write that to delete "bonafide" before a farmer. No objections, so ordered.
And then on line three, where it says "compensation from the farmers' crop compen, crop damages from the program, from the compensation to farmers for crop damages". From the program, from the compensation to farmers for crop damages. And qualify for compensation from the, to the farmers for crop damages program relative to the agricultural natural disaster.
That I'm going to have to get in writing.
Okay.
Okay, so Speaker, can you use, go to page one?
Yes.
And on lines seven and eight, is this to use that compensation to farmers for crop damages?
That's correct, that's correct, that's the word.
So that's what you want then for the language on page two, line three?
Right. The name of the program.
Yes, the name of the program.
Okay.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, and once again, Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues for, for their support of this and certainly hope that that support will come with a, with a vote to pass this legislation.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Duñez.
Madam Speaker, I'm gonna make a request at this time because I'm working on an amendment. As the good speaker had mentioned, there are other potential opportunities, so is it okay if I change my place? I know there were other speakers while I continued to work on my amendment, Madam Speaker?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On, on the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this bill number 223-32COR, and I want to thank the good author of the legislation, Senator Panglinen, for giving me the opportunity for being a part of this. Madam Speaker, not too long ago, I had a family come up to me and asked me to assist in reference to seeing what they could do to get a funding source of help for their damaged crops, and this was a local, very young family from the South. And, Madam Speaker, when, when, when this family came up to me, the wife was saying, "You know, we work so hard, we have our children, and of course, my husband who, who really takes care of the farm, and we're not asking for much." But you know what? This is a part of our livelihood, but not only our livelihood, those that we continue to grow crops for, and, you know, I think that there's a program that, that we could look at, and I know it's been there since the 90s, and, and this family was looking at the compensation to the farmers for crop damages. So of course, I too was not very familiar with it, but I had looked into it, and I said, it was surprising that, based on what has happened to a lot of the major farmers here, that what was coming to fruition was in a form of a loan and not being able to look at this chapter that this family was bringing up to my attention. So of course, when I saw the, that bill 223 came out to play, I, I shared with the family that this was, that Speaker Ben and, and Speaker Rispisho were, were working with something, and there's going to be a public hearing, and that we really are gonna address the concerns of the farmer. More importantly, the family came up, when they were talking to me, the wife kind of teared and she said, "You know, I have to support my family, I, we have to support our kids, and we can't borrow anything more. This is not the first time our crops have been damaged, but you know, as tomorrow's we get up, we pick up the pieces and we move on." And I know that a lot of things get imported here to Guam, and it doesn't always, it doesn't have to be like that. You know, after World War II, a lot of our parents and our grandparents, she was saying this to me, they farmed. We had to farm for our livelihood. We had to farm in order to keep our families alive. And all we're asking is for the government to look at a program that exists in the books today, and I want to thank the good author of the legislation for talking a little bit about it because when she brought it up to me, she said, "You know, I know government is supposed to provide for the basic services," and I say, "Yeah, I always say that, I'm, I always, I'm reminded of what we as a government have to do as, as, as providing for the basic necessities." But what better way to know that the government of Guam already has a program in place? All we needed to do was follow certain, the, look at the criteria, look at the, the submission, look at what, the definition of what a bona fide, I mean, what a farmer is, and then, and then just look at the needs, and of course, it gets verified by, she said, the Department of Agriculture, and of course, when I looked it up, everything she told me was in place. And, and she said, "I know that it was updated in 1997 or something like that," and to me, this was a very young farmer, but her parents, I mean, her family had farmed previously, and she said, "Please, Senator, if there's anything that you could do to help the farmers, not just for our family, but for all the farmers here, we don't have to get everything imported. We can grow a lot of our food, our vegetables, we can grow them here. Please help us." I was able to see that family last night, the mother, and she was in tears and she said, "Thank you." She said, "That's the best Thanksgiving gift that you can give a farmer and a family, is to be able to show that the government of Guam does care, that the policymakers are looking into something that they could be able to provide, and we will continue to provide the crops for our community. All we're asking is for a little bit of help. But Senator, if you're asking me to borrow money, I cannot borrow anymore because I know in my heart that I cannot pay it back." And I want to say thank you to Speaker Ben for really taking the time and, and the committee, Senator Rispisho, for bringing this up to the forefront, but more importantly, to the farmers out there, Happy Thanksgiving. We are listening, want to make a difference, and we will continue to look at the program that's in place today and give the farmers what they need because their crops were destroyed, not by their own will, but a will beyond our control. So Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this, and I hope that my colleagues will also jump on the bandwagon and, and support this very, very good measure for all the farmers of Guam, whether they're small or commercial, but we need to go back to the basics and, and being able to give the farmers the opportunity to, to, to continue to grow their crops, their foods, fruits and vegetables, and, and all the other things that, that can be done here on Guam. Sisus Massey, and Happy Thanksgiving to the people out there, thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, Senator Duñez, you're ready or not? You are ready, okay. So Senator Duñez, you're recognized on the motion.
Madam Speaker, thank you, and Sisus Massey, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 223-32COR. Madam Speaker, as I listened to the author and his description, and of course, as many of us have expressed our deepest wishes for the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday and the balance of the holidays, I listened and I, and I understood also the issue of inclement weather because, Madam Speaker, in a former life, I too understand, as the gentleman mentioned, the bounty of the sea because I am a pescador. And Magaite, when it's utsan for pescadores, usually sometimes it's really good because the water is cool and the fish tend to come up more, and so it's opposite to the farmers sometimes when it's very, very heavy rain. For the fishermen, sometimes it's very good for the farmers, it's sometimes a real bad problem, and we identified and saw that. Madam Speaker, as I listened also, I remembered that it is true in terms of inclement weather, and as I listened to John Bora and his testimony of the program that's being discussed here today, it was this tchataan when this program was actually utilized. As we would all remember, sataan was a typhoon or became a super typhoon. Maybe it was a tropical storm in its passage of Guam. That's the last time that this program, according to John Bora, was used. So, 11 years, yeah, if I'm right, something like that. So Madam Speaker, it's been a little while, and some recent legislation, you know, of course, has come forward now to, to really substantiate the need to do this, and, you know, Madam Speaker, I'm preparing an amendment now as I discussed. Because originally, yes, as I talked to a lot of the, the farmers earlier, because of the discovery of a reimbursement of $390,000 to the general fund from a program that was enacted in public law, and it's being passed out now, Madam Speaker, that public law was 31233, and that was a matching grant necessity in the amount of $390,000 that now has been reimbursed to the general fund. And Madam Speaker, as the amendment would have said, amendment says now, would have replaced, but I will go ahead and take the advice of the good speaker from Baragada, and we'll add it as a section two. And that is clearly now, Madam Speaker, within the parameters as the discussion in section one under chapter 64A, title V of the Guam Code annotated, to administer that program for our farmers. Madam Speaker, it is not, I don't believe, my job or responsibility to defend or not defend or discuss what is GIDA's financial situation, how they budgeted for this fiscal year. I'll leave that to them. I'll leave it to those who are gonna administer the funds, and they can make a decision on the funding source, one, all, one for all. But Madam Speaker, the reason why, reason why we were so happy to have discussed this amendment originally to replace, now to be in addition to, is because this is cash in the bank. We all know that the intention, and we did wonderful in the bond market, we got a great rate, they even reduced the borrowing amount because they did so well. Hopefully, like they said, it will mean less water bill too. Because that's what Simon said. So, many blessings, Magaite, matupago. And so, Madam Speaker, at this point, I would like to introduce this amendment, and it's to add a new section two, which describes public law 31-233, chapter five, section one, subsection D. Four is hereby amended to read. And there is the four which is, lines out that program, and now it says, "Farmers Crop Damage Compensation," underline, which has been additional. "The sum of $390,000 is appropriated from the general fund to the Department of Agriculture for the sole purpose of funding the compensation to farmers' co-op damages program established persuasant to 64A, title V of the Guam Code annotated." It, of course, Madam Speaker, lines out the former program, which is now reimbursed. The general fund has the cash in the bank, and we also add a 13-03, Article III, Chapter I of Title V, Guam Code annotated, shall not apply to the appropriation of this subsection. The appropriation in this subsection shall not be subject to Imagala Hingwahan's transfer authority. And so, Madam Speaker, in closing, as we discussed now, and I guess it will be technical nature also, Madam Speaker, to move all other sections as this additional section is moved into place, and, many blessings from the Lord, manna from heaven, Magaite, Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I will listen to the discussion on the proposed amendment. Sisus Massey, talu, Madam Speaker.
So Senator, your amendment then is to add a new section two, and then we'll renumber the rest of the section.
That's correct, Madam Speaker, so the section one will remain intact.
Yes.
This is a new section two.
Yes.
And, and it will, and then so the, you know, we will have, in essence, basically, Madam Speaker, two funding sources and, and, and we'll move forward and, and allow those who administer these funds to make their, their decisions accordingly and help the farmers. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so Senator Munia Barnes, your point of what?
Yeah, my point of, I mean, inquiry was just to verify, and I guess you just probably clarified it, but just for the amount, it's the $400,000 plus the $390,000, we'll make it $790,000, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. I support the efforts, thank you.
All right, so on the amendment, and I have Senator Mike San Nicholas, I mean, I'm sorry, Mike Limtiako, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the amendment as well as in the general intent of Bill 223, and, and I commend the good author for always bearing in mind the needs of the farmers. We only need to look back as earlier in the, this legislative year where the passage of the bill to fund the Farmers Co-op was done, and so it's, it's always, it's always, I know he's always headed at the forefront of his mind and, and this legislature as well, and I commend him for that. And I, I rise in full support of the amendment, Madam Speaker, because it's money that's available right now, and, and the good author had alluded to the fact that the farmers have been waiting for over two months, and my concern with the original bill was that the revenue, the funding source that was identified, the $400,000 in bond service fees that GIDA will receive, it's not available right now to my knowledge, and, and I'm not sure when it will be available, and, and so we, we definitely don't want to have the farmers wait any longer whenever these fees are actually available and actually can be dispersed. And the, and the fact that we've acknowledged that, you know, the, the good author had made reference to say, "Hey, you know, if there's other money available, well, you know, tack it on, let's add it on and see, you know, see what needs to be done for the farmers." And I think, I think this amendment is a sign that, yes, we agree, you're, you're right, and, and the fact is, is that this money's available now and can be appropriated for any claims that potentially have already been filed, or any claims that are in the process of being filed right now that can be immediately resolved and, and reimbursed, or not reimbursed, but funded, because the money is available now as opposed to when the funding for these revenue fees, or excuse me, when the availability of these, these service fees will be available. So, once again, I certainly rise in support of the amendment. I think it was, it was timely that the good author had called, saying, "Let's add it on," and, and I think we can all agree that we should add it on, and I hope that my colleagues support the amendment and that we can move forward on the bill and, and get it passed. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the amendment, Speaker Panglinen?
Thank you, and Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly want to thank my good colleagues for their change of heart with regards to this money. You know, there was the original, the original idea of what was proposed to me was that rather than using the bond fees, that we just substitute the bond fees, and that we take this $390,000 and take away the $400,000 and only give the farmers $390. That was the original proposal. That was the original proposal that my good colleagues wanted to do. And of course, they asked me actually to approve that. And I said, no, I don't want to. I say if you have extra money, then give extra money to the farmers. Why just limit them to the 400 that we have had? And by the way, the money for the 400, I believe, should be in the bank because the bonds were sold, and so the proceeds were issued and the money was deposited, the proceeds of the bonds were deposited in the bank accounts and in the trust accounts. So this 400,000 should also be available, Madam Speaker. But the idea was they were trying to convince me that we should only, we should take away the 400 and only give the 390. And my position was, no, I'm not going to settle for that. If you think you have more money, then let's just give more money to the farmers. And so I'm certainly glad to stand in support of this and see the change of heart that occurred with my good colleagues. And it really is then going to be a good Thanksgiving for the farmers. And I want to thank my colleagues and fully and wholeheartedly support this one and not the original one of substituting it out. And so I thank my colleagues for their support for the farmers and certainly wholeheartedly support this. I don't want to say that I'm kind of like listening to the nuances of the arguments and, you know, the idea was that we'll give this and this and then let the administrators decide to do one or the other. No, 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 no. Let's not, let's not play those games of now saying, oh, we're not going to give the GITA money because we have this and it's up to the administration. No, I'm pretty sure it says here that both appropriations shall go to the crop compensation program. And I hope the governor doesn't play any kind of game and only decides to do one or the other. Because it is clearly, and I want to state this for the record, it is clearly the intent of every single member of the body, given this amendment, that they're going to get both, that they're not going to get one or the other. And the governor or Department of Agriculture is going to choose one over the other and not have both available to them. Very clearly, the intention is to have both available to them and that these appropriations get transferred to the crop compensation program, the accounts are established, and the money is deposited, sequestered, sequestered for the single purpose of paying compensation to farmers who suffered these damages. Thank you, and Sidus Maasi, and I thank my colleagues.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm certainly pleased that we've been able, we started out with a $400,000 appropriation to be put into the program. And now with the recent amendment, been added another 390,000. So in essence, on average, I understand from the public hearing that there's about 500 registered farmers. And so initially, we started out with a 400,000, that's about $800 average per farmer. And with the additional amount to be supplemented to the program, now we're looking at around $1,600 average compensation to the farmers. And all that is great. However, I'm kind of concerned by the fact that, for example, on this $400,000, there seems to be that continued notion that this money is not yet available. And that this money of $390,000 has been reimbursed, it's in the general fund, it's sitting there. And so if that's the case, then I would like to put in language to the effect that then said appropriation shall be made available to the program within 30 days of enactment. Because the farmers need the money now. They don't need it in January, they don't need it in February, they don't need it when we get around to it. They need it now. So I'm thinking that with that language, then it becomes clear that, and expectations can be reasonably set, that these funds within 30 days should be available to the program so that then the applications can be processed. Oh, three days? Oh, let me amend that. Shall be available within three days of the enactment of this act. Sorry, I added a zero inadvertently, so it's actually meant for three days.
Yes, and I'd like to get that amendment writing, but in essence, what you're trying to say is that these appropriations then should be available within three days of enactment. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator. On that amendment, without any objection, okay. On the amendment, Senator Duennas.
Madam Speaker, I wasn't sure if I would close on my amendment, so I just wanted to rise on some of the comments that have been made on the floor.
I certainly want to, how would I say this? I certainly want to make sure that it's not any, there's any thought process, I'm playing games here, okay? It was made clear because of inquiries that were made that the closing had not been finalized and that it is 10 days away from the 500 or 400,000 being available. Now I know that even the good author had changed the title to talk about funds available. So there's a lot of opportunities that are being worked on here to make sure. So I just wanted to be clear and on the record, there is no games going on here. I did my homework. I made sure that the funding source of the 390,000 was there. Three days is fine. Applications are going in now for the 200,000. So I have to say that and make it very clear, Madam Speaker. Because, you know, we all come here in an opportunity to work together, to speak together on these issues and to show that we have our hearts in the right place. But you know, it is, I will always maintain that those who execute programs, that is their job. Because that is why there are the several branches in government. No games, Madam Speaker, support the three days. Let's all just continue to work together to have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so we haven't voted yet on the amendment, so we're going to vote on the amendment to the amendment. And the amendment then will be right after, if you look at Senator Duennas's amendment, is right after authorities to add then the language from Senator Ada that basically says that the appropriations shall be available within three days upon enactment. On that amendment.
But, Madam Speaker?
You don't, oh, because...
It'll be for both appropriations.
Oh, for bo, okay, okay.
So I guess that same qualification is going to have to be made in...
Yes, so we're going to have to put that under also section three.
No, section one, the appropriation of the 400,000.
One, you're right. One. Okay, so, okay, now can we then, can you make that motion for legal counsel then to determine the appropriateness of where then it should be? Oh, one second, is yours related to the amendment? Or you want to speak on the amendment? Yeah, so that's, well... Okay, wait, so let's, okay, let's... Okay, yeah, I think it would be best for us to take a recess, okay? But we're still on Senator Ada's amendment to the amendment, to the Duennas amendment. Recession. The legislature is back in session, and we left off with Senator Tom Ada with an amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the amendment to the amendment that was proffered by the gentleman from Tamuning would read at the end of, where it reads, "Establish pursuant to chapter 64A, Title V Guam Code annotated, add the sentence, 'Said appropriation shall be made available to the program within three days of enactment.'"
Of enactment, okay.
Now, I suppose, so that's the amendment to this amendment.
Yes.
And I suppose then we will need a different amendment.
Yes, and I'll recognize you for that second one.
All right, thank you.
So on the amendment to the amendment, which is said appropriation shall be made, shall be made available to the program within 30 days of enactment. I mean, three, I forgot to take off the zero. Within three days. On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. Now, on the amendment that has been amended, which is Senator Duennas's amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator Ada, on a similar amendment for a different section.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make an amendment to section one to add the following sentence at the end of line nine, to read, "Said appropriation shall be made available to the program within three days of receipt of GWA bond service fees."
On the amendment, which is on page one after, on line nine after annotated, the language will read, "Said appropriation shall be made available to the program within three days of receipt of GWA bond service fees." Is that correct, Senator? Service fees.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. Can you please make sure the clerks get that in writing? So let me see, go back to my list, I have Senator Mike San Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in full support of the bill, as originally drafted and now as amended. You know, I don't view this as a way to help farmers or as a handout or even as a way to assist them. I view this as an investment. You know, we, it was mentioned earlier, one of the retiring speakers, that we've already taken out bond money to invest in the development of a farmers' co-op. Surely, we should be investing in the actual farmers who are going to be growing the crops for that co-op. And so I rise in full support of this, not only because this represents an investment, but I believe that we should look beyond this. And I believe that the Guam Economic Development Authority in particular needs to look beyond this. I mean, I was very disturbed when the author of the legislation, Speaker Panglinen, was going over the conversation that he had with GITA when they were saying that they had other uses for the money. This is an investment in our farmers. Our farmers are part of our economy, our industry. If you aren't going to be spending the money to invest in our farmers, what's more important? I hope that it's for some, I hope that they were planning on spending on some other grand investment, but you know what? At the very least of this 400,000, we're going to get cucumbers and corn. Because when you look at the track record of our economic development over the last 10 years, our debt has gone from 400 million to over a billion. We've doubled our debt, and the quality of our life, quality of life of our people has not improved. I'm not that old, Madam Speaker, but I do know the difference between now and 10 I'm not that old, Madam Speaker, but I do know the difference between now and ten years ago. And the economy of today and the quality of life of today hasn't gone very far. So, I want the Guam Economic Development Authority to listen very carefully. They need to stop coming up with ways to spend money and actually look at the money they have and how they can invest it in improving the economy of our island and our people. And surely, four hundred thousand dollars to get our farmers back up and running is an investment in our farmers, an investment in our people, an investment in our island. And to say that you have another purpose for the money, very disturbing, Madam Speaker. I'm also very, very glad that a gentleman from Tamooning also proffered this amendment to identify this additional three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the same purpose. It's an additional investment. What excites me even more about it is what it implies with respect to Bill eighty-nine and the need to override that because, as he stated in his, in his presentation, this money is real cash in the bank. And when we have real cash in the bank, we can address real problems immediately. And if we override Bill eighty-nine, we will have real cash in the bank with the collection of those receivables, and we can fix the problems at Sanchez, we can address the problems at DOC, we can address the problems with our law enforcement pay adjustments, and all those other obligations as well, with cash in the bank. So I thank the good gentleman from Tamooning for his amendment that's taking real cash for a real solution. And I thank the author of the bill for making sure that our Economic Development Authority is actually investing in the economy. I'm very curious what that four hundred thousand was going to be used for. I'm very curious what the whole budget of the Guam Economic Development Authority is used for when you look at the track record of our economic growth as it relates to our unemployment, as it relates to our cost of living. Unemployment has just gone up, thirteen percent, I think it is now. Our cost of living has gone nowhere but up, wages have gone nowhere. The economy has not grown, our debt has doubled, and yet, even four hundred thousand dollars is for something else other than for our economy, our farmers, our agricultural industry. One of the, one of the real things that, that, that leaves me scratching my head at the end of the day is how we have this huge, huge budget to run this island and how we spend three quarters of a billion dollars in a year. And yet, the return on all of that investment is just so hard to really wrap our hands around. And I think the biggest reason why is because we're too busy focusing on what it is we want to spend the money on rather than focusing on what the money is actually supposed to be used for. Investment, especially economic development money, is supposed to go to investment. Investment in our economy, investing in our industries, not just in tourism and our existing commercial businesses, but in agriculture and in fishing and farming. Let's put that investment cap back on and start investing in our people and investing in our community. This bill is not to help farmers or to assist them, it's to invest in them. And we should not only pass this, but we should also change the entire mindset of how these very same monies are being spent because these kind of investments into our farmers are things that should be, be continuous and ongoing every year to not just help them get back on their feet, but to help them grow and thrive. That's the kind of stuff that we should be investing in when it comes to economic development. And I thank the author of the bill and the gentleman from Tamooning who amended it for realizing that these kind of investments are going to not only give a return in the form of increased economic activity, but is going to put some really healthy food back on our tables. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, and recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wasn't intending to speak on this bill, but I do want to rise in support of it. I was contacted by a couple of farmers immediately after the disaster and asked what we could do. And I advised them that I thought that it was the executive branch that had the authority to declare the emergency that would have made the two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars immediately available. They didn't make a declaration of emergency. They didn't make, until yesterday, they didn't find that they had, in a previous declaration of emergency, left over two hundred thousand dollars that they're now going to apply for this. That should have been applied two months ago. This recent discovery of three hundred ninety thousand, they've known about. And their ability to be able to move funds within the administration, we've given them so much authority for transfer, they could have and should have done this two months ago. It shouldn't have waited until Senator Pangolinan and Senator Rispicio started to agitate and, and schedule hearings and introduce legislation. They've had six hundred thousand dollars available to them for over two months. They've known it, they've had it. We shouldn't have waited until we had to come in here today to talk about the need for Thanksgiving. But it is good that it was today that we're discussing this bill, Madam Speaker, because it was just today that Mattson announced that they will now be starting to charge an additional two hundred and fifty dollars per container. Three hundred and fifty? Three hundred and fifty dollars per container. Addition. I agree with the retiring speaker that it should be an investment in the economy, but even more importantly, it should be an investment in the sustainability of this community just in case we can no longer afford to bring in three hundred and fifty dollar additional can, uh, dollar cans to provide us our vegetables and, and our goods. But besides the economy, it's imperative that we have the ability to be able to feed ourselves in the event that we get cut off. So this is an investment in our sustainability as well as an investment in our economy. And I rise in thanking the, the farmers for providing the bounty for our tables for this coming Thanksgiving. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. Is there Senator Tamada on the main motion now? Or? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill as amended. But also, I would like to take this opportunity to, the cosponsor of the bill, Senator Rory Rispicio, unfortunately is off island, and has asked that, that I read into the record his statement concerning Bill two-two-three dash thirty-two. So if you'll allow me to read it, this is a letter from Senator Rory Rispicio.
May proceed, Senator.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, on the eve of Thanksgiving, I am thankful that Governor Eddie B. Calvo and his administration now fully understand that our island's farmers need help in the form of grants and should have never been offered loans as a means for them to procure seeds and other farm-related materials. Today, we must all stand up for our island's farmers and be thankful to Senator Pangolinan for introducing an appropriation measure to provide funding for purposes beyond the initial two hundred thousand dollars made available through the governor's use of his transfer authority. Bill two-two-three dash thirty-two was publicly heard on November twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. I submitted written testimony lending my support for this bill and encouraged its progress through our legislative process. Now that the governor has agreed to exercise his authority to declare such emergencies and by supporting the work of both Senator Pangolinan's Appropriations Committee and my Agricultural Committee, I am hopeful that the process of providing local farmers with compensation is now moving forward. I rise to also recognize Vice Speaker Ted Nelson and Senator Pangolinan for establishing this program some twenty years ago. These two leaders and others, past and present, understand our fragile agricultural industry and provided a statutory mechanism to aid our local farmers whenever they suffer major crop damage from storms and typhoons. Last month, I asked the governor to declare a state of emergency to provide this immediate relief to our suffering farmers who lost their crops due to the heavy rains. Unfortunately, in response to the recent storms, the governor chose to apply his emergency transfer for other storm-related purposes, but did not agree to help our local farmers pursuant to existing law. Madam Speaker, coupled with the governor's existing emergency transfer authority, this government should have promptly responded to recent storms by immediately releasing the compensation provided under this statute to mitigate damage suffered by island farmers. Instead, the administration essentially ignored the Crop Damages Compensation Program, which has its rules and regulations already promulgated by the Department of Agriculture. This program was implemented during Typhoon Chataan under the Gutierrez administration. As an alternative to the grants of the Crop Damages Compensation Program, the Calvo administration chose instead to, to offer island farmers GITA loans. As was found in the Agriculture Committee Roundtable, which I convened last week on this issue, the debt financing offered farmers was completely inadequate and incomprehensible. Madam Speaker and colleagues, what our farmers needed two months ago was compensation for damage to their crops. They should not have been offered GITA loans. This administration should have followed existing laws so our farmers could receive compensation so they could pay their bills, including water and power, and still be able to start planting again. Under the Crop Damages Compensation Program and through the passage of Bill two-two-three dash thirty-two, our farmers will have the means to bring their farms back to full productivity. We need to give them a helping hand so they can raise the product, the produce, to not only feed their families, but also help rebuild Guam's agricultural industry. Now that Governor Calvo supports the Crop Damages Compensation Program, I confidently submit that this legislature will follow through to provide further funding for this program as called for under Bill two-two-three dash thirty-two. In doing so, we will be serving not only the interests of local farmers, but also the larger community which has a stake in a strong agricultural sector. I therefore urge passage of this legislation and thank you again for allowing my comments to be read and appended to the record. Seduce Masi, Rory J. Rispicio, Senator. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, the main motion, are there any other speakers? Okay, there being none, then Speaker Pangolinan to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank all of my colleagues for their participation in moving this bill forward on behalf of the farmers. And again, most especially on this week of Thanksgiving, Madam Speaker, in which, you know, last week, they really had nothing to be thankful for in terms of how this government had responded to their needs. And I think today, all of our actions give a little bit of hope and certainly will hope that, once we get this bill to the governor, that, without any fanfare, without anything, that he realizes the urgency and that the turmoil that we've put this govern, this farmers and our people into, in, in play over the last two months, that it'll just get signed and things will get done. And our farmers will certainly have an opportunity to begin recovering finally with the help of this government. And I thank my colleagues for all of their effort in this regard. Thank you, Seduce Masi, and happy Thanksgiving.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolinan. So on the motion to send Bill two to three dash thirty-two to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We are going to take a, a little recess to allow the legal counsel and the clerks then to engross the two bills and then we would vote. Okay, so we will recess. So we will recess.
... back in session and we are in the voting file and we would start with vetoed bill number eighty-nine dash thirty-two. If I can ask the clerk to read the title.
Bill number eighty-nine dash thirty-two COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Michael F. Cuseniklis, Vicente Bency Pangolinan, TC Ada, TR Munya Barnes, RJ Risposio, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada excused. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan excused. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Lim Tiako.
Nay.
Senator Lim Tiako, nay. Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, excused.
Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye.
Senator Risposio. Senator Risposio, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Cuseniklis.
Aye.
Senator Cuseniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita, nay.
Notwithstanding the objections of the governor on vetoed bill number eighty-nine dash thirty-two. It received six yea votes, four nay votes, five excused absence. Vetoes bill number eighty-nine dash thirty-two failed to get the required votes to be overwritten. Bill number two zero nine dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two zero nine dash thirty-two COR. As amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. And further amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, Vicente Bency Pangolinan, TR Munya Barnes, Eileen A. Yamashita. An act to amend section three of Public Law thirty-one dash forty as amended by Public Law thirty-one dash two-three-four. Relative to extending the deadline to obligate or expend American recovery and reinvestment funds.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, excused. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, excused. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Senator Duennius, aye.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, excused. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risposio. Senator Risposio, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Cuseniklis.
Yes.
Senator Cuseniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Senator Yamashita.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number two zero nine dash thirty-two received ten yea votes and five excused absence. Bill number two zero nine dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Andrew C. Park to serve as member of the Guam Land Use Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Andrew C. Park received ten yea votes. He's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Dr. Michael Bavaka to serve as a literature member of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. All in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Michael Bavaka received ten yea votes and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Dr. Judith Flores to serve as a member of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. All in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Judith Flores received ten yea votes. He's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. James Mason to serve as a general public member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. James Mason received ten yea votes and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Dr. Suzanne McManus to serve as a general public member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Suzanne McManus received ten yea votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Christopher Felix to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Christopher Felix received ten yea votes and he's duly confirmed by this body. We're going to take a brief recess. The bill is, there it is, so just hold on. And for the public, the reason why the votes are tens but five excused absence. Before we vote, please, on bill two-two-three, on page one, the language there in the end of the sentence. On lines eleven, it would be made available to the program within three days off receipt of GWA bond service fees. Okay? Not enactment of this act. Esta? Everybody, everybody's okay? I'm writing it right now. The clerks also have it. Yeah, one is Risposio, two is Munya Barnes, and three will be Tom Ada. Gwiza famaisin finetnana. Atresao ho, pes you snooze, you lose, so therefore. Esta? Manre diamzu? Bill number two-two-three dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-two-three dash thirty-two COR. As amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. And further amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, RJ Risposio, TR Munya Barnes. An act to appropriate the sum of seven hundred ninety thousand dollars for the Compensation to Farmers for Crop Damages Program. Established pursuant to chapter sixty-four A of Title Five of the Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, excused. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, excused. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Senator Duennius, aye.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye.
Senator McCready. Senator McCready, excused. Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye.
Senator Risposio. Senator Risposio, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Cuseniklis. Senator Cuseniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number two-two-three dash thirty-two COR received ten yea votes, five excused absence. Bill number two-two-three dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Senator Tom Ada, you recognized for a motion for adjournment.
Madam Speaker, I move we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion, without any objection, so ordered.